D nine, modification to section two one nine, restrictive covenant registration as a land title office document number CA nine zero seven four zero seven five to allow for development permit application number DP one zero zero one zero zero eight three two. Ms. Wosnick, would you please introduce the report at Agenda item D nine?
Thank you, Your Worship. Your Worship, the purpose of this report is to seek Council's approval to modify the section two nineteen restrictive covenant registered on the title of the property located at forty five hundred Ospeka Boulevard. Your Worship, the city entered into agreement to sell the subject parcel with the current owner in 2020 for fair market value of the property at that time and for the purpose of being developed into a 256 unit apartment intended for student housing. The sale of this property was finalized in June of 2021. As part of the sale, a section two nineteen restrictive covenant was registered on the title of the property to ensure the property was developed with the proposed 256 unit apartment building intended for student housing. The applicant has changed the scope of the project and is now proposing 118 unit apartment offering congregant housing intended for seniors. This proposed change of scope to the initial intended project for the subject parcel requires a modification to the existing section two nineteen covenant. Administration supports the proposed modification to the existing covenant as the proposed 118 unit building is consistent with the future land use and growth policies of the official community plan as well as the existing zoning of the property. Your Worship, enclosed with the report package is development permit number DP one hundred eight three two, which would replace the existing drawing package for the 256 unit project should Council support the proposed covenant modification. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Counselor Sampson.
Thanks very much, Your Worship, and thanks, Ms. Wosnick, for this. Couple of questions. When staff puts forward a recommendation such as this, can you give some more context on the reasoning behind that? It's not necessarily meaning that staff is saying, yes, we endorse this. It's meeting the principles of which the city has our framework. Can you provide more context on that?
Sure, Your Worship, here to Counselor Sampson. So the approval or the recommendation of approval for this would be with consideration of the land use being proposed. So the zoning of the property, the existing 256 unit being permitted under the covenant and affiliated development permit and variances. So with this new proposed building, that would have been reviewed in accordance with zoning, OCP direction, as well as the development permit guidelines and our zoning, all of which have been met with the new proposal.
So in an effort of fairness, staff have to treat applications under certain categories with the same lens as they would any other proposed on this. And I want to be clear because there's been a lot of criticism on this, and I appreciate staff doing their job and doing this fairly and bringing this forward. It's our decision to decide whether this moves forward or not, but it's staff. I just want to be clear that staff's bringing this forward because this is the framework in which any applicant would have to go through, and you have to follow the same framework for everybody to create procedural fairness. Is that correct?
That's correct, Your Worship. As I said in the intro, this covenant was put on title at the time of the land sale to ensure what was being proposed to be built was in fact going to be built. So it was an extra step that administration is able to take to ensure when we sell our land, what's being proposed is constructed.
Great, thanks very much. So Latitude would be talking about the sale of the land originally, which was for fair market value. Is that correct? At the time, the market value of the property is what the property was sold for?
That's correct, Your Worship.
And is it fair to assess that the value of the property could be increased for a number of reasons, including the fact that it was sold and has attached a development to it so that BC assessment may evaluate the property at a higher rate because there's now a development that's locked in, air quotes, on that property?
Correct. Also, the zoning has since occurred, again, public process, rezoning of that site occurred, which changed that zone to allow for further use in what it was previously intended for.
Great, so those things would increase the value of the property.
That's correct, Worship.
Thanks very much. I just want to be clear on that because I think that this has gone through a public process. This has been public along the entire way, and I think staff has acted fairly for this applicant, is bringing this forward in a process that they would for any other applicant, and they're doing their job. It's our job now to approve or deny this, and I'm going to come out and just say flat out, I'm not in favor of this. I don't support change in the terms of the sale of this contract and the covenant that was on the sale for this project. We sold the lands for a specific purpose. We made a deal with the developer that this was what was going to be built there, and that's what I expect to be built there. So I will not support this at all. But I do want to be clear on the process. This is going through a fair process, and staff has done their due diligence bringing this forward, and I appreciate their work. And I appreciate that this is being treated like any other application, and I will not be supporting it. So I will move that the recommendation be denied. Thanks.
Second, Counselor Frisell.
Thank you. Just on that, Your Worship, with the motion that's on the floor to deny the modification, that would also remove the last section of the recommendation on screen and authorize as the Director of Planning and Development to execute the modification agreement, that would come away.
Great. As Mr. Connelly just gets proof instead of proof, right?
As Ms. Connelly said, moved.
Counselor Frisell.
And I'll get into Q, Your Worship.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Yu, and thank you to Counselor Sampson for setting context. We are open for business in this city. We do want to work with developers. We've spent a lot of time considering what the housing needs are in this community, and the housing needs assessment that we've looked at shows clearly what we need. We've got an agreement, and I want to stick with the original agreement, and I'm not interested in changing this covenant. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Bennett.
Thank you very much, Your Worship. Just, I guess, a question, an initial question through to administration. Has there been any indication with this type of move from a student housing complex to a seniors' housing complex in terms of, I guess, the target demographic of seniors that they're looking for in terms of? I know it might be too early to look at, you know, if it's low income or high income or, but I'm just wondering if the proponent had given any indication when they put in a proposal to modify?
Your Worship, here to Counselor Bennett. I don't have that information with me.
No, not a problem. I recognize that could be outside of this process as well. I mean, Your Worship, I'm going to be speaking in favor of the recommendation to deny. That was a weird statement. You know, I've spent a lot of time going through the City of Prince George's 2021 housing study, looking at what, you know, hearing from the feedback that seniors provided in terms of what kind of amenities that seniors would be looking for in additional housing. And I think it's fair to say that there is definitely a need for increased seniors' housing, but when looking at the checklist of what kind of housing the seniors are looking for, and especially, you know, the clause around, you know, close to amenities, close to medical services, this location just does not meet the needs in terms of what is going to be an ideal for a seniors' complex. Saying that, I think there's also a bigger need. The study identified, you know, the need for over twenty five hundred additional rentals, not just for students, but for, you know, particularly those who make under twenty nine thousand a year. There's also needs for additional rentals for those who make under sixty five thousand a year. And I feel that the proposed change to the covenant, to shift to senior housing, just does not align with what we are hearing the needs of the community are through the most recent housing study.
Thank you. Counselor Ramsey.
Thanks, Your Worship. I appreciate Counselor Sampson bringing up the fair market value, as Ms. Wosnick mentioned in her opening remarks. For me, a covenant is an agreement. We came to an agreement with the developer the first time we looked at this. I am in no way willing, I just, I can't, I am not going to support changing the agreement that was in place, that was mutually agreed upon. We are desperate for student housing in our community. The housing needs assessment was very clear. We need 5,000 rental units of housing by 2030. Five thousand. Thirty percent of that needs to be zero or one bedroom, and this fills that quota slightly. That's about seventeen percent of the 1,500 units we need. So I just, I was very clear on this when this first came to Council, advocating for student housing in this area, which is university heights. So I just cannot support the previous motion that was amended. So I will support Counselor Sampson's motion to deny the modification to the section two nineteen covenant. And I look forward to seeing what transpires from that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Polio.
Along with Counselor Ramsey's comments, I agree wholeheartedly. It's, this was a specific deal at a specific location to fill a specific need, and they can't change the deal. We're committed to it, and we have to move forward with that covenant in place that was there, and that's how the property should be developed. In my opinion, it's quite clear. It was, for that location, it made sense to have a student development. But to me, to change it now when we had a deal and where it is, to me, doesn't work for seniors' residents. So I will support the motion to deny.
Thank you. Counselor Scott.
Thank you, Worship.
I'll get into Q, Your Worship.
I too am supportive of the motion on the floor. I don't believe, I don't believe even if we went ahead with seniors' housing in this location that we would address the critical gap in our city, which is Alzheimer's and dementia care. That's not even, that's not even an element in this suggestion. So I am well satisfied that we deny this amendment.
Thank you. Counselor Skaken.
Well, thank you, Worship. I'm just confused on a couple of things. What was the original covenant that was agreed upon with the developer? And I think the first time I might have seen that was in a Prince George's citizens story. So just, I don't think it's in the report, but what was the original agreement? What were they supposed to do within those couple of years to live up to the agreement? Like, I don't know the details.
Your Worship, here to Counselor Skaken. The covenant stipulated a 256 unit apartment-style building intended for student housing. It also indicated, I don't have it in front of me, I'm sorry, that commencement of framing occurred prior to, I think, consideration of any amendment to occur. So the original, my understanding is the original covenant is attached to the package this evening. Not sure if you have access to that or not, but it's attachment number five.
Okay, yeah, I see the framing and everything. So, and that two years has expired before, without any framing going up, correct?
Your Worship, so item attachment number six in the Council package indicates an amendment to that covenant, which removed the framing requirement and reduced it to commencement of foundation being poured.
Right, and that was done some time ago, is that correct?
That's correct, Worship.
Okay, so, and if this was to go through, what would force the developer to actually build seniors' housing?
Your Worship, if, sorry, the question's about the proposed modification?
Yeah, like, what, how, obviously, you know, they promised everybody in the community they were going to build student housing. So if this passed tonight and we allowed the student or the seniors' housing, what would force them to live up to that commitment?
So same arrangement as the existing student or 256 unit apartment building being attached as the covenant. So the proposed 118 unit would replace the 256 unit in terms of the attachment to the covenant, and they'd be held to the same items of that covenant as it stands today. It's just the drawing package and the reference to the type of build that would change.
Okay, thank you. And just to build on Counselor Sampson's comment, is that correct if someone says they're going to build something and the zoning there, the value goes up? Because my thoughts were always that if it's rezoned, the property value goes up, whether or not they say publicly they're going to build something.
Your Worship, through to Counselor Skaken, that would be my understanding is it's based on, it's that rezoning and that, what uses are permitted under the proposed or approved zoning that would determine perhaps that value of the property?
Okay, thank you, and I most definitely won't support this. We had a deal going forward, we had a public hearing. We were told originally there was going to be four stories. It was changed to five stories. Seniors' housing in that area is just absolutely, there's no way it's going to fly. There's the access, the egress to the site. You know, I really think that we have an obligation to live up to our end of the deal, and I definitely won't support this. And this is about standing up for what I believe is right, and what is right is, you know, having the developers live up to what they originally intended to and sticking to it. So I definitely will support the motion, and next steps to administration, I guess, we'll have to see what happens with the developer. I'm not sure of the details, so thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Scott.
Thank you for letting me back in, Your Worship. I was remiss in not acknowledging the many people who telephoned and emailed us regarding this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Frisell.
Thank you, Mayor Yu. I just wanted to say for those folks who are following this online that there's just a slight website glitch in the agenda on the website that's outward facing. It says it's a 188 unit apartment, but on the internal documents, it is actually only 118. So there's just a slight error on the external facing one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Sampson.
Thanks very much, Your Worship, for letting me back in. A couple of things. One, I want to agree with Counselor Frisell's comments, and I was remiss in not mentioning that we are open for business and we are prepared to make deals with developers who are looking to invest in our community that is right for our community, and that includes selling property at fair value and seeing the priorities of our community come to fruition. That's exactly what this was, and that's why I'm not going to be supporting this change is this does not align with that. I want to expand on a few other things. The section two nineteen covenant, actually, I'll backtrack even more. Counselor Skaken mentioned that I said that the property values would go up just because they said they would build. I want to clarify my comments. We applied a covenant on the property upon the sale and upon rezoning that said that they would build by a certain date and that they would build a certain amount of units for a certain purpose. And so can I be clear that it's not because anybody said they're going to build, it's because we applied a covenant that says they will build by X date with X amount of units of X style and design even at the time. And so can I get clarification from administration that once permits go in, which there was permits pulled for this property, development permits, that would trigger to BC housing an inflation of the assessed value of the property? Is that correct?
That's correct, Your Worship. Through to Counselor Sampson, when building permits are applied through the city, that information is shared with BC assessment, and then they would go from there with their valuation of properties.
Did I say BC housing?
No, I was being careful, sorry.
Assessment. I appreciate that. So to be clear, you know, this was triggered because the covenant that was placed on the property, they pulled the permits, it triggered BC assessment to know there is development happening here, and this is exactly what it's going to look like. It's been rezoned, and this is the approximate valuation we're putting, or the evaluation we're putting on that property at this time, and then it's increased over time, inflation, whatever other measures go into that.
Correct.
Thanks very much. I also want to be clear that Council put a motion, it was a motion of Council that applied the section two nineteen covenant. Is that correct? Council applied that covenant?
Your Worship, that was a step that administration actually took, again, with our land sale agreements. That's very typical that, under the delegation authority bylaw, the Director of Planning and Development does have the ability to enter into agreements or whatever tool might be necessary to see through negotiations or land sales, for example, that they are met to what is being proposed.
So Council never saw the covenant, the section two nineteen covenant, come to us?
That's correct.
At any point?
Not till probably fall this evening.
Okay, great, thanks very much.
I do have one question for administration. The building permit was pulled 2022. So normally, the process, we have two years after the building permit is pulled to, you know, to complete the project, but we sometimes will give some leeway, you know, here and there. So during, it's obvious this project, based on this timeline, is not going to get done under this building permit. What is the process after that?
Your Worship, the building permit you were referencing was applied for and canceled because it related to the 256 unit apartment building, and that was issued for a foundation-only permit. So upon cancellation was when this new proposal for the 118 unit was provided to the city for consideration. In terms of the dates of which this has to be built by, 2023 is the year which the covenant stipulates. So having the need of an extension of that of some sort would have to be further explored with administration and the owner.
Thank you. So because the original covenant covers two-year period to get this project done, and since the initiation of the canceling, the BP is initiated from the developer, not us. So therefore, we are not in a violation of the covenant, but the developer perhaps have some question regarding the area, right? Am I correct?
I have one further question, Your Worship, sorry.
Okay, just, am I correct? Because they initiate the cancellation of the building permit.
That's correct, Your Worship, because they've had a change of scope that they'd like to achieve on the site in terms of a project. So the 256 unit building permit, foundation-only permit, doesn't align with the permit needed for the 118 unit, so they canceled it.
I understand, because the original covenants cover two years. So if we agree to their change, basically, we'd be broken the covenants ourselves.
Okay. Counselor Sampson.
Okay. I wanted to back in, sorry, Your Worship.
Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, just a question on the, now, the Prince George's citizens story, I go back to that, and that's when I found out that there was, it looks like some negotiation or change in the covenant, and I'm not sure exactly what it did to this process, but just to administration, when we have a substantial land deal like this, and I know we have a delegation of authority bylaw, but what is the, is there an onus on administration to inform Council that they've changed a covenant which might have an effect on the scope of the project? I'm not sure if I could just get that.
Your Worship, through to Counselor Skaken, there technically, that is not necessary to do so, to come back to Council. However, this is a perfect example of direction we would like to practice in terms of the scope of a project changing so significantly. As it's been noted earlier this evening, all the land use applications leading up until today were pointing to a 256 unit apartment intended for student housing. So when something's, the project scope changes as drastically as this has to this proposed modification, administration deemed it appropriate to bring that back to Council for consideration, not only Council but the public, because of all the public processes that were in place for the rezoning, the variance permits, that they too, as a public, be notified as to the change of scope or proposed change of scope for this site. So that is something that I intend to practice in my role as Director. So previous to my time in this seat, I can't comment, Counselor Skaken, I apologize.
Okay, that's fair. So if this vote is voted to not allow the change, will administration be putting some information out on what the process is going ahead as far as the land and everything?
Your Worship, to Counselor Skaken, that would be certainly some, an action that I would have to take away and look further into and then provide feedback back to Council. That's correct.
Okay, thank you, and hopefully we can keep the public in the loop as much as us. Thank you.
Counselor Sampson, last.
Thanks, Your Worship. We did hear about the section two nineteen covenant on March eighth, 2021, moved by Sampson, seconded by Scott. The Council permits that consideration of the final reading of proposed bylaw number nine one five six 2020 and nine one five seven 2020 be withheld until the following requirement has been met to the satisfaction of administration, a registration of a section two nineteen, no build covenant on the title of the subject property. So I just wanted to point that out, that we did get that back. It wasn't all encompassing every detail, but it did come to Council, and the opportunity to ask questions on it was available. Thanks.
Well, I just, I have to chime in to Counselor Sampson's comments, okay? If I may, Your Worship?
Okay. Yeah.
The point is, we could have had what the actual conditions were of the covenant and what the effect of not living up to those conditions were, and not all that information is there. Sure, we could provide direction to administration, but that doesn't mean we have all the information. And all I'm saying is administration could have come back to us at some point, which Ms. Wosnick says she will in the future with those important details. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think, you want to, okay, one more time. Mr. Ramsey.
Thanks, Counselor Ramsey, but thanks, Your Worship. Just through to Ms. Wosnick, you know, I don't think we can change anything that's happened in the past, but moving forward, perhaps we could just have a little bit more information. In the five, four and a half bit years they've been on Council, we haven't had any issues with any two nineteen covenants. We've registered quite a few. So perhaps just to negate this issue happening in the future, a little bit more details coming to Council would be appreciated.
No further questions on Counselor Sampson's motion to deny this recommendation? Or in favor of the motion? Oppose? Carry unanimous?
In favor on the phone.
Thank you. So the motion is to deny the recommendation. Thank you. Let's move to the next item.
Thank you, Worship. Your Worship, the purpose of this report is to seek Council's approval to modify the section two nineteen restrictive covenant registered on the title of the property located at forty five hundred Ospeka Boulevard. Your Worship, this is the same covenant modification request that was considered by Council on February the sixth, 2023. The applicant has again applied to modify the design covenant to facilitate the development of 118 unit apartment offering congregant housing intended for independent seniors' living. As a reminder to Council, the current design covenant stipulates a 256 unit apartment building intended for student housing. Included with the proposal this evening is a letter of rationale prepared by the applicant explaining the request to modify the design covenant from the 256 unit apartment building intended for student housing to the 118 unit apartment building intended for independent senior living. Administration supports the proposed modification to the existing covenant as the proposed 118 unit building is consistent with the future land use and growth policies of the official community plan as well as the existing zoning of the property and addresses a housing need in our community. Your Worship, enclosed with the report package this evening is the complete development permit number DP one hundred eight three two, which would replace the existing drawing package for the 256 unit apartment project currently included with the design covenant. I am available for any questions Council may have.
Thank you. Counselor Polio.
Your Worship, I would like to make a motion that we defer a decision on this, and I'll explain why. There in the package, in the supporting. Oh, sorry.
Second, Counsel.
Thank you. In the supporting package from the managing partner of Hub Collection, Ashley DeGray Osborn, he says a lot of things, but one of the thing that took particular attention to me was an independent CBRE visibility study that was conducted by them that basically concluded that this was a perfect site for a seniors' facility. I don't see that study in this supporting package. I am suggesting that we request to see that study before we make a decision on this. This is pertaining to the land use issue. I think it's very important, and I'd like I think it's very important, and I'd like to see, for his case, he believes it's a compelling piece of evidence, but we don't have it to make an informed decision. So I'd like to see that independent C-B-R feasibility study before we make a decision on this.
Thank you, Counselor Polillo. May I ask administration a simple, anybody seen that before? Have you, administration?
Your Worship, I have not seen that feasibility study.
So how are we having, it's in the agenda, and then nobody has seen it?
That was second?
Second, yeah. Counselor Bennett?
I'm in the queue.
Yeah.
Sorry, Your Worship, I was, I had other questions related to the main motion and process, but not, Counselor Polillo beat me into the queue, so I will get back into the queue if this motion comes back to the floor.
Since, I'm just going to make a quick comment. I'm not quite sure. Counselor Skaken, you're on the queue. Go ahead.
Well, I, I'm just a little confused here. Are we trying to get some documentation that it was a responsibility of the developer to include in his package or educate us in one way or another? Is that what we're trying to do?
Yes, I mean, I think it's a compelling piece for his argument, and we don't have that information to see it. So how can we move forward tonight without this really key piece forward of information? To me, it's an important piece.
Okay, so just, I'm going to speak against that. We, you know, I don't know how many times I've been in council in 20 years where we've changed things on the fly because the developer hasn't given us the information he could have. I mean, people need certainty. I will absolutely not support this, and there's no way right now. We've got to vote on this tonight and deal with it instead of just deferring it, and then, you know, what else? Is he going to come back with something else that isn't included in this package? It's his or her responsibility to bring their information. Administration went through a lot of work to bring this back to us in a short amount of time, and to defer it is just not right. Thanks.
We, Counselor Sampson, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks, Your Worship. I think deferment's an acceptable option. I don't necessarily think I came here today thinking I was planning on deferring, but Counselor Polillo makes a good point that there is information here that the developer's asking us to make our decision off of, but hasn't provided us all the documentation on that stat. He's listed, you know, here's X, Y, Z, but it doesn't have the A, B, C portion of that. It doesn't have all the information for us to consider. So to say that that's not a fair option for council to ask for more information, I don't think is, I don't think that is fair. So I'm going to support this. My question is, there's not a timeline listed in the, listed in the, or mentioned in the motion from Counselor Polillo, so I'm wondering to staff, is it possible that we can tie a timeline to this and ask the developer to bring it back to us for the next council meeting? And if not, then we'll have to make a decision without the information, I guess. Is that appropriate to staff?
Your Worship, I can make that request of the applicant, yes.
Great, thanks very much. I have more comments on this application. If this doesn't pass, then I will jump back in and make those comments as we debate it, but otherwise, I'll support deferment at this time to get that information to help make my decision. Thanks.
Counselor Ramsey?
Thanks, Your Worship. I, thanks to Counselor Polillo for raising this. You know, as I read the letter from the applicant that was attached to the package, I too had noted the feasibility study, and I do think that that is a key document. You know, we've heard feedback from the community that says, you know, this isn't an ideal location for seniors' housing. So if there's a document out there that says this is a great, you know, this is a perfect location for seniors' housing, then I think that it's appropriate for council to ask for that information before making a decision. So I will support deferment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Call a question?
Call a question. Are you in favor to delay this decision to next meeting until we receive the package from the developer? Thank you. Carried, the matter will be dealt with next time until we receive. No difference.
Your Worship, just to confirm, I've got yourself, Counselor Clausen, and Counselor Skaken opposed. Is that correct?
Say it again.
Just to confirm, I have yourself, Counselor Clausen, and Counselor Skaken opposed.
Yes. E6?